Welcome everyone to the Barrow School Committee Meeting of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The regular meeting begins at six P M. Being held at the Barrow High School Media Center, four twenty-five East Avenue, Harrisville, Rhode Island. Everyone is present except with the exception of Sean Bolson, who has an excused absence. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real quick, I placed the microphones while you were in your budget workshop. If you would, you know, move them to being in front of you.
So, agenda item number two, recognition. We have none tonight. Agenda item number three, consent, agenda approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session held October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and also the regular meeting, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second it. Motion made by Donison, seconded by Sylvia St. Pierre, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forington invoices.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six school warrant number four for the month of October dated November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Grand total expenditures, three million, nine hundred seventy thousand, five hundred eighty dollars and eighty-three cents.
Second. Motion made by Donison Allen, seconded by Jill Calipari, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and we have no bids tonight. Agenda item number four, presentation by the public to the school committee.
There are no public presentations scheduled tonight.
No public presentations. Agenda item number six, personnel leave of absence, retirements, resignations.
You skipped public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, skipped one. Agenda item number five, public comment.
As you all know, next year is our nation's two-hundred-fiftieth birthday.
Um, yeah, I was gonna say.
Just so we can all hear you.
We just gave them an address, thank you.
David Hool, forty-eight, Mill Pond, Harrisville. Next year is the nation's two-hundred-fiftieth birthday and the, on the town council liaison to the two-hundred-and-fifty commission for the town. And last night's meeting, we discussed the possibility of putting in a time capsule at Freedom Park with the, all the work that's being done at the dam. It's gonna be, we're making a nice viewing plaza. I became aware that the high school put in a time capsule some years ago. Not sure which year, maybe two thousand and one, the last, for the two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth birthday, anniversary. And I thought maybe it's, could be a project for the high school kids to do again for next year. So, I, I just bought a flyer that we just had got printed out. I'll leave with the superintendent and something to consider, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I'll loop in the social studies department at the high school. Might be something they'd be interested in doing.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Semi-quintcentennial?
Nice.
That is a big word.
I've been practicing that, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Agenda item number six, personnel, leave of absence, retirements, resignations, and appointments.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Kelsey Hopkins, principal assistant, William L. Callahan, effective November third, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second. Motion made by Donison Allen, seconded by Jill Calipari, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to receive and file the subsequent appointments as presented.
Second. Okay, motion made by Donison Allen, seconded by Jill Calipari, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, agenda item number seven, whole business. Fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, Barrow School District Budget Update.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second. Motion made by Donison Allen, seconded by Jill, Sylvia St. Pierre, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda item eight, number eight, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a very short report today, wanna save some time for Mrs. Mayhew for her state assessment result presentation, which is upcoming, looking forward to that. So, I just wanted to report on the budget workshop that we had prior to this meeting, as well as the subcommittee meeting, a budget subcommittee that we had at ten A M. this morning. In short, we looked at our F Y twenty-seven budget for next year, knowing that we need a draft budget approved at our December meeting, so it can then be presented to the town council in January, the budget board in February, and then continue to work on that budget for final presentation at the public hearing, usually in June. So, the first step for that would be to have a budget, a draft budget, ready for your review, discussion, and approval at the December meeting. That's what we will, we will do. We came into the budget workshop today. If we were to keep everything that we currently are offering our students and all of our contractual obligations for next year, we would be looking at an increase of just under two-point-two million dollars from F Y twenty-six to F Y twenty-seven. We know that that's a, a large number. So, Robin and I will be working on getting that two-point-two million down as much as we can prior to the December meeting, and then present you a revised budget for your consideration, discussion, and vote at the December meeting. And other than that, as I said, the state assessment results have arrived within the last month or so, and Mrs. Mayhew has an in-depth presentation that she's gonna be giving shortly. So, I will reserve any further comment pending the presentation by Mrs. Mayhew. Happy to take any questions from any committee member if they have any.
Nelson? Okay.
Thank you.
And moving on to agenda item number nine, state assessment results, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Mayhew.
Thank you all. So, here we are again. Somebody asked when I first came in if the news was good, and it is. So, I'm happy to be able to say that, so you can all breathe a sigh of relief. So, tonight, we're here obviously to look at our state assessment results, but I also really want to emphasize a little more than that. And it's more of the story of the work that we are doing together as teachers and students in our district, and really emphasizing the growth that happens in students throughout the year, every year. A lot of times, we really focus on the numbers, and the numbers are important, but they don't always necessarily reflect the student growth and learning that happens throughout the year. And so, today, we're really gonna focus on telling the story of our students' progress, and it's more than just numbers, it's really a collaboration. So, I just wanna draw your attention to this quote that came from one of our students. "I was having a hard time on a math test. I wrote down the problem like a thousand times and still couldn't figure it out. My teacher taught me that when I am frustrated, I should slow down, take a deep breath, and tell myself I can do anything. So, I did, and I got it." And that's why all this matters, right? When we think about focusing on the story. When we focus on student growth, we see how our students are developing skills and confidence and readiness for what's next. And sometimes, those numbers don't allow us to fully see what it is that our teachers are working so hard to build and what our students are working so hard to learn every day. So, tonight, we'll be diving into our data story. In Baravel this evening, we'll be talking about the results from the R I C A S assessment for grades three to eight in both E L A and math. The N G S A, which is our science assessment given to students in grades five, eight, and eleven, and then the P S A T and S A T assessments for grades ten and eleven from this past spring. And we will also be looking at students' growth in those assessments where we are able to do that. I do wanna highlight, before we move on, our test participation compared to the statewide participation rate. We had ninety-nine percent of our students this year participate in P S A T and S A T testing, which was better than the statewide average of ninety-six percent. And that high participation really reflects a strong student engagement. So, I think that's an important piece for us to consider as we look forward into where our students excelled and where they made important gains. So, let's start with the highlights of our E L A achievement with R I C A S in grades three through eight. So, overall, as a district, we're at about twenty-nine percent proficient, up from twenty-five percent last year. So, a gain of three-point-eight percent overall of students in the proficient and exceeding categories for R I C A S. And as compared to the state, which is up just two-point-nine percent, we made better growth than the state average overall, so that's a good thing. I wanna shout out grades four and six, who had exceptional gains this year. Grade four overall made a gain of five percent of students in the proficient and exceeding categories, and grade six went up fifteen percent over the course of a year, which was a huge leap for them. And the good news, of course, is that nearly all of our grades showed nice, steady, consistent growth. As you're looking at the chart, the blue, well, it looks like it all blue for you. On my computer, it's green. So, the dark blue represents the districted numbers, and the lighter blue, the brighter blue, represents the state numbers for two thousand and twenty-four and then two thousand and twenty-five. So, if you're looking to compare those two, that's what that represents. If we look forward to math, similar code for the, the graph that you're looking at, dark blue represents our district, and then the brighter blue represents the state. Overall, as a district, we're at twenty-seven-point-one percent proficiency, up from twenty-three percent last year. So, that's a four-point-one percent gain over the course of the year of students in the proficient and exceeding categories in math. The state was up one-point-three percent overall. So, our gains exceeded those of the state as a whole, which was also good news. In this case, I also wanna shout out grades four and six again. Grade four was up a total of eight percent of students in that proficient and exceeding category, and grade six was up twenty percent. Big leaps in grade six this year, they did an exceptional job. And of course, now we have to think about science. So, our science assessment, as I said a few minutes ago, was, was given in grades five, eight, and eleven. And the big success story in science this year is grade eleven. So, the percentage of students proficient on the science assessments this year in grade eleven increased ten percent. They went from seventeen percent proficient up to twenty-seven percent proficient. And they went from eight percent of students exceeding the expectation up to eleven percent exceeding, which was a big jump for us. And a bigger picture that's not necessarily shown here is that the number of students who are at level one, which is not meeting the standard, decreased from forty-one percent down to seventeen. So, I think, you know, when we talk about growth, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, the, the piece that these results don't necessarily show is how we're trying to close that gap of students who are at that level one and level two. So, we want, obviously, more and more of our students to be in that exceeding category, but right alongside that, we also wanna be pushing that, that red, number-one category down so that it's smaller and smaller. Grade eleven really did that this year, it was a huge leap. The district is pretty consistent with the state. Overall, the state average stayed the same. Our overall average as a district dropped a little bit, but across the state, we're definitely seeing that. The science curricula are not necessarily, they're, it's the last sort of aspect of the high-quality curriculum implementation that the state has been asking from us, and many districts are not yet there with their science curriculum K to twelve. And even if they are, it's only been a couple of years that you're still seeing those implementation dips. We'll talk a little bit about where we are in a few minutes, too. So, we also measure how much students have improved over the last year, regardless of their starting point. Their growth matters as much as their proficiency. And this was a quote from one of our teachers at the middle school, that students have been connecting the dots between constants of proportionality and unit rate and slope, and it's been so fulfilling to hear them say, "Oh, I get it now," or "Wow, this makes sense now." So, R I C A S has a growth index that allows us to compare student achievement year over year, one child at a time. So, I can look at Jill Calipari over the past three years and see how much growth she's made personally. And then, they're able to calculate a student growth index, which shows us the number of students who are making typical or high growth. So, typical growth would be basically what you would expect, a year's growth in a year's time. High growth is more than that, low growth would be significantly less than that. So, when we're looking at our growth in E L A, and we're looking at grades four through eight, because we don't have any comparison data for grade three yet, sixty-five percent of our students made at least typical growth, and many high growth. So, combined, two-thirds of our students are typical or high-growing. And then in math, the same thing, sixty-seven percent in grades four through eight made typical or high-growth in math. And when I say that growth matters much as proficiency, remember that the scores in math were not quite as strong as E L A, but the growth of students is just as strong, if not a little bit stronger. So, even though we aren't seeing the number of students necessarily at proficient that we want to see, we are closing the gaps. All right, let's talk about high school. So, P S A T and S A T scores, let's start with literature, E L A. As a, so the district scores are the gold and the, I'm sorry, the P S A T scores are the gold and the S A T scores are the blue. We are up in liter, in E L A on the P S A T, five percent from last year, and nine percent on the S A T from last year. So, both good, solid gains. So, we went from sixty-one percent proficient to sixty-six percent proficient on the P S A T. The state average decreased by four percent. On the S A T, the percentage of students at proficiency, as I said, increased by nine percentage points, from forty-eight percent proficient to fifty-seven percent. The state increased by just three. So, we outpaced the state average in both of those cases for E L A. And, I mean, the ultimate outcome is that this, this is showing that our students are increasingly prepared for college-level work and career-level work after they graduate. So, for math, excuse me, P S A T. Sorry, Justin, can you just get that, there we go. For P S A T, the percentage of students at proficiency in math increased by twelve percentage points this year, which was a really big leap, twenty-four to thirty-six percent. The state increased by two. And then the S A T percentage of students at proficiency increased by one, which was the same as the state average of increase. We're still a little bit ahead, and we're really hoping that that leap in the P S A T that we saw this year is going to carry over into next year for the S A T scores. Typically, lately, the trend has been that P S A T scores are trending a little bit higher than S A T, but that's a big jump, so we're expecting to see that carry over. I really wanna credit the math teachers at the high school for examining the responses and questions on the P S A T and the S A T and identifying the gaps in the curriculum, and then working alongside me, but, but with the entire department to ensure that the content gets included in their math courses. So, that's been a lot of work on the part of Christie Craig, who's our math department chair, with her entire team. And the other piece that the high school is doing, which is a very, besides the very deliberate examination of the data to identify those gaps in the curriculum, is also looking at students who are close to, but not quite, meeting proficiency. And they are using their Bronco Focus Hour this year to take advantage of Khan Academy, which is a program that's provided free by the Department of Education for school departments this year, and now they've just upped it again for next year. So, we're excited about that, to support their learning. So, Khan Academy involves, it uses A I, but it also uses real teachers to explore math concepts and explain them, and allows students an opportunity to, to either relearn topics and content that's been learned already and to practice it on their own, and to kind of dive in more in-depth into any learning that they need to help get them over that bump to proficiency. And they're able to do that independently, so that teachers can focus on teaching the entire class or teaching on, teaching other groups. So, it's kind of a, it's a great system. The admins have been working really closely with the math department with that in place, and we're really hoping we're gonna see a big shift based on that. Next year, we're also looking at having our ninth graders take the P S A T, so that we can get some of that data earlier, and we can find out which students are on that little bubble, right? That they're close enough that just a little bit of nudge would get them, a little bit of a nudge would get them over the top, and then use two years to address any unfinished learning, so that we can have more and more students reaching proficiency as they get closer to graduation. So, I wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk about our subgroups. As you're looking at the data online, you're able to see that it's disaggregated out by different populations. So, you can look at populations of students who are homeless, populations of students disaggregated by race or ethnicity, students who are economically disadvantaged, students who have I E Ps, students who speak English as a, as a second language, and so on. And I'm specifically targeting these subgroups, because they're gonna come up again a little bit later. But I wanted to point out some really big gains that were made. So, as you can see, our students with I E Ps on the P S A T made a gain of ten percent. So, ten percent more students with I E Ps were proficient or exceeding in E L A on the P S A T this year than in the previous year. Among our students who are economically disadvantaged on the P S A T in math, fifteen percent more students were proficient than the previous year. So, those are big gains, and consistent with or better than the regular population, the, the whole population, the general population. Twenty percent of our students who are homeless actually increased their, or reached proficiency or exceeded proficiency in P S A T math and E L A. So, both of those measures, we had twenty percent more students who were coded as being homeless last year. And among Hispanic students, twenty-four percent more this year reached proficiency in E L A on the P S A, on the S A T than the previous year. So, big leaps for those subgroups as well. And the state identifies them, because typically, those are subgroups that might struggle to keep pace with the, the population as a whole. And so, we pay special attention to them, and when we're thinking about providing supports, we wanna make sure that we're identifying all of them and catching any areas where there might be gaps in learning. So, it's exciting to see that kind of movement. All right, so, what's behind all the growth? What are we doing? I mean, you guys have heard me talk kind of almost ad nauseam about the high-quality curriculum implementation, but I'm gonna talk about it again. So, as you know, we've got our E L A curriculum in place now for grades K through twelve. Our teachers have been using it, some of our early adopters now, this is their fifth year. And others have been only at it for a couple of years, because we rolled it out in, in sections across K to twelve. But that is fully functional and, and rolling right along. And in fact, I'm looking at those sixth-grade gains and thinking about the fact that our sixth-grade teachers last year were in their first year with their new curriculum, when those numbers were a lot lower. And, and then, I'm sorry, not last year, but the year before. So, in two thousand and twenty-four, they had just had one year with a new curriculum. By two thousand and twenty-five, two years in, you saw those big gains. So, it's a kind of a nice way to think about the connection between the high-quality curriculum and instruction and the gains that we're making in our testing. Math has been in place K to twelve. This year, our K to five students are, had sort of an upgrade in Eureka. Eureka has a volume two or, or a part two, Eureka Squared, they're calling it. So, our teachers have been using those new materials. They've changed the curriculum, they've made adjustments based on teacher feedback to make it more accessible for students, and they've changed some things like the scope and sequence, and also the instructional practices that go along with it, to make sure that it aligns more closely with the math standards. So, we're expecting to see great things out of that, and our teachers are all involved in a lot of professional learning around that. Science, this year, we've rolled out our new high-quality science curriculum in grades six through eight. So, our six-through-eight science teachers are gonna be using the, implementing the first three modules of OpenSci Ed, which is one of the approved programs for middle school. And over the next two years, they'll implement the remaining three. So, there are six modules altogether. Our expectation is that next school year, in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, we will begin to implement that at the elementary level. So, the good news about OpenSci Ed is, first of all, that it's an amazing curriculum, and it's also supported by our partners at GemsNet at U R I. And we've been working with them for years. So, we expect that even though we're implementing a new curriculum, it's not going to create an additional substantial cost for the district, because we're already involved in curriculum work and, in replenishing curriculum materials with GemsNet. So, one will just take over for the other. And then, in terms of the high school, we're probably looking at the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year for the high school curriculum, because there really still aren't any that have gotten right approval yet. And there probably won't be any until the end of the school year. We're all holding our breath waiting on that one. So, the curriculum is one piece of it. The other piece is assessments, right? We are, we have a very clear assessment system in the district. We know what we're using and why we're using it, and we're looking closely at the data that it gives us. Our, you know, there's a lot of talk about over-assessing kids, and we're very mindful of that. We're very careful to have conversations constantly about which assessments we're giving and, and, and the why behind it. If they're not giving us data that's useful, then we need to stop doing it. And by the same token, if we're getting good data from it, we wanna make sure that we're giving it the time and the space that it needs. So, assessment has been a big part of our conversation all along. Data analysis is the third piece of this. We, I mentioned what the high school's been doing in terms of looking at the, the kinds of questions and the responses that students are giving on the P S A T and S A T. We do that same kind of data analysis at the elementary and middle level with R I C A S, thinking a lot about what we're teaching and how it relates, not just to testing, but to the standards, because R I C A S measures that. And also thinking about how that data can inform our, our instruction, so that we can accelerate students when they need to be accelerated and provide supports for students who need to close gaps. So, the next prong of that, of course, is a comprehensive intervention system. We've been working a lot on getting consistency in our intervention across all of the grade levels. We are in a pretty solid place across all three elementary schools now, with a great deal of consistency and certainty that we have research-based, evidence-based interventions in place for all students. We've developed maps that show where students fall on our assessments throughout the year and what that means in terms of the kind of intervention that they should be receiving, so that it's very clear for teachers and very clear for administrators. If you fall here, these are the things that need to be happening, and we're constantly progress monitoring throughout the year to make sure that what we're doing is working for them. And then finally, ongoing professional learning for all our teachers around all of those things, so that they are also on the same page with each other and with the administration, and that we're all talking the same language about what we're doing and why we're doing it. So, all of that wrapped up together really provides a comprehensive support for all of our students. So, that said, let's talk about where we're headed. As you know, the accountability measures and results were released by the State of Rhode Island. Accountability is R I D S report card for school districts. So, accountability, the accountability measures have, there are fourteen indicators for accountability for each school district. In most areas, we, we are achieving what R I D calls mid-level performance, meaning we achieved the midpoint or better, better of the possible cumulative points in each category. And that includes things like achievement and growth in E L A and math. There were two areas where we had exceptionally strong performance. The first was post-secondary success for our students, and that includes things like the number of students who graduate with A P credit, the number of students who graduate with college credit, the number of students who graduate with C T E credentials, things like that. It can also include international baccalaureate credit and seals of biliteracy, although our students are primarily falling in those first three. The second area where we did really, really well was under teacher chronic absenteeism. So, the state tracks absenteeism of teachers. Chronic absenteeism means missing ten percent or more of the school days, so more than eighteen days in the year. And in this case, our excellent rating is because far fewer than ten percent of our teachers are chronically absent during the school year. So, that's a good thing that we're very proud of. Areas where our performance is in need of improvement are the percentage of students earning the commissioner's seal. So, the commissioner's seal is given to students who show proficiency in both E L A and math on the S A T measure. We have a lot of students who are getting one or the other, but we need to bump up the number of students who are achieving both. The other area, we're actually really, really close in the next area, which is exceeds expectations in math. So, we need to have at least two percent of our students exceed expectations in math to be able to get up into that at least mid-level category. And right now, we're at one-point-seven. So, we're really, 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 really close. And the thing to remember about this data is also accountability takes into consideration the past two years. So, even though we saw all that, you saw the growth and the movement for this year, it still takes into account what happened in the twenty-three, twenty-four year. So, everything that I just showed you indicates that we are definitely on the right track for meeting what we need to do to boost up our accountability numbers again. I did wanna mention that each school individually has an area of targeted need where a particular subgroup of students, remember, I was showing you all those subgroups in. where a particular subgroup of students, remember I was showing you all those subgroups in the slide a few back, slide 12, where a subgroup didn't perform as well as the population overall. All of our elementary schools and our middle school have been identified as needing targeted support and improvement in the number of students who exceed expectations in ELA. So not students who are just proficient, but students who are actually better than that. So we all need a little bump in that area. And then the middle school's been identified for overall achievement in math. So we need to get their numbers up. And then the high school for achievement in science. And you may be saying, wait a minute, wasn't the high school the success story in science? And it was, but it also takes into account that 23, 24 data. So we're definitely on the right track. We are moving very strongly in the right direction. And we are really hopeful that next year's scores are going to look phenomenal. So, in the coming year, what are we doing? We're aiming to increase our literacy and math performance at all levels, continuing to improve proficiency levels in science at the high school. The growth never stops. It's a continuous journey, right? Continuous improvement is our path forward. It's all we can do. So we're very mindful of all those areas where we need the improvement. We're happy with the growth, we're happy with the numbers, and we're going to continue to work for something even better than what we've got. And as I said at the beginning, that growth that we have is a shared story. It reflects the dedication of our entire school community. So I do want to take an opportunity to thank our teachers and our administrators for their very hard work. They are really doing phenomenal work every day and they have a lot on their plates. And they are just doing an incredible job and still remembering that they're teaching small and larger children who have lots and lots of needs and are people that are very well-rounded and need a lot of consideration in a lot of areas, more than math and ELA and science. So I just want to give them a shout out and thank them for everything they've done. That concludes my presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
So, Mrs. Mayo, just a couple of comments. So first of all, thank you for the presentation, very, as always, very well done and colorful. So just for the record, I think we've seen a lot of increases in a lot of areas of success across the board in all subjects and in all areas. That being said, we still have a long way to go as far as getting our achievement scores higher. I think we all realize that. We don't want to say, okay, yeah, we made some good progress. So, you know, we're going to kind of ride the coattails on that for a couple of years. That's not our philosophy. So we're continuing to try to push as much as we can to increase our students' performance at a higher and higher level every year. A big part of that is the curriculum implementation. And we spoke about this a little bit in our budget meeting, the high-quality instructional materials in ELA and math and now in science. And providing an opportunity for those to really be implemented with fidelity and to provide professional development for teachers as those are rolled out. So it's a monumental task and kudos to Mrs. Mayo and to our teachers for really jumping in on this and providing the instruction and the direct instruction and support that our kids need. But we're going to continue to do that. One thing I wanted to mention about the accountability piece, because it's a bit of a pet peeve of mine, is that the accountability of our schools is based on really, I don't want to say complicated, but maybe in-depth would probably be a better word, metrics of how you score in several areas. But when they release the accountability ratings, it's based on the lowest area that you score in any one of those areas. And they have a star rating formula, which philosophically I may disagree with a bit, but that's how RIDE has done it. And they'll say that, you know, X school is a three-star or a one-star or a five-star school based on these metrics. But again, the lowest level that you have is what you're rated as a star. So you can have a school, for example, that has four and five stars in every category except one. In that one category, they have two stars and that'll be labeled a two-star school. Or you can have a neighboring school that has three stars in everything and they're a three-star school. So, looking at those two things, in my mind, is some differences between those two schools and which school is a quote-unquote "better" school based on those ratings. You would say, oh, the three-star school is. But then if you look at the data, the other school performed in every area except one. And it's a two-star school. And we're dealing with some of that at the high school level. So at the high school, we were a three-star school last year. Based on our accountability, we're down to a two-star school this year. And that is based on one metric where we scored two. We've got several metrics where we scored fours and fives. At the elementary level and the middle school, we were all three-star schools last year and remained three-star schools. But they usually have less categories at the elementary levels than we do at the middle and high school levels. So that's something that we're trying to address next year, this current year, for next year's accountability ratings. But I just wanted to be transparent about that, that we're, our elementary schools are all labeled as three-star schools. Middle school is three stars as well. And our high school came in this year and it did drop from three stars to two stars, but that's primarily based on one area where we didn't achieve what we'd like to achieve. We've got some plans in place to address that for next year. But several of the other metrics at the high school are four and five stars.
And I would piggyback on that by saying that the one area where we got the two stars, we missed the cutoff for the three-star rating by a cohort of like between five and 10 children. It was that close, so.
You'd think they would take like an average.
An average.
You know, like that's just.
Yeah, that's a pretty negative way of.
I think the rationale behind it is that if there is a school that is chronically underperforming in one area for one group of kids, so let's say it's, you know, one demographic of kids that every year is underperforming, they want to make sure that school identifies that area rather than say, oh, we're a four-star school.
Right.
And they could, you know, kind of ignore that one area. But in my mind, it really penalizes schools that are, you know, doing well in many areas, but just have that one negative in one area like we are. It's kind of a one-off. It's not a systemic issue that happens every year with one group of kids. And if that's the problem, then, you know, shame on you for not addressing it. But the accountability issue that really bothers me is rating a school as a two-star school, even though in most of the metrics, they're high, you know, high performing and performing well above a two-star school.
Can I ask a question directly related to that? And thank you for the presentation. It seemed to me that our averages in that category from a statewide perspective were higher than the state as an average. Now, how does that play in? Like it doesn't, you know, just to me, I mean, being higher than the average, would that suggest that other schools around the district are suffering that same fate?
I mean.
With that labeling of two stars?
The vast majority of schools in the state, and Mike, I mean, you can back this up, there are very, very few that achieve more than three stars. And there are many that have been rated two stars for similar reasons than us.
Yeah, they saw an increase, I think, this year in schools that were three stars or higher. So across the board, there was a big increase in that across the state. But schools like ours, there were several, I think, that, you know, were labeled two stars. It was a big, this was a big controversial issue last year because a classical high school was rated as a two-star school, even though in every category, I believe, in every category, they were four or five stars. In one category, they were two stars. And they have a lot of demographics that other schools don't have. So if you have, you know, you have several subgroups because of your population of students, where another school doesn't have that same population of students and they're labeled a five-star, even though you outperformed them across the board in every other category, but you have more categories than they do. So that kind of brought spotlight on some of the accountability measures last year. And I think we kind of fell victim to the same, you know, a similar issue this year.
I mean, it's great for us to use it as a tool, but to publicize it and make it known to the public for the purposes of them looking at your school in a certain light.
And it is a public document on the RIDE website. You can go in and check out which schools are listed as, you know, across the state as one, two, three, four, and five-star schools. So that's the part, I think, that bothers me most is that, you know, I don't want anyone to think that Barville High School is a two-star school because it's not. We just came back from a stellar NIESC accreditation visit where we've got lots of commendations across the board. And because we, by one metric, underperformed in one small area by a handful of kids, we're labeled a two-star school, so.
You'd think they would, on the website, you'd think they'd break it down.
They do. You can go in and look at it. You can go in and look at it and see exactly where they are. But I think the reason they did that is, you know, rating everyone by that lowest star rating was to really add some pressure to, for schools that are not addressing particular subgroups of kids that are underperforming, whether it's students with IEPs or economically disadvantaged, whatever the case may be. But overall, I think as a district, we're certainly headed in the right direction. We saw some really strong gains in grades three through eight. We saw some really strong gains in SAT and PSAT. The science data across the state has been not, I would say lagging behind, not where you really want it to be in relation, in comparison with English and math. But that's probably directly related to the curriculum rollout being a few years behind where it is, you know, at the other levels. ELA and math curriculum has been in place for a few years now and science curriculum's not. So I don't think it's a big surprise that the science scores aren't what the math and English scores are quite yet. Hopefully in a couple of years, they'll catch up.
My next question, if you don't mind. You had mentioned we're implementing a new science curriculum.
Correct.
Which is sort of our own undertaking, I guess you could say, because the state hasn't given us the green light.
So they haven't given the green light at the high school level, they have at the middle school level.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, so, and so the legislation calls for, the tricky spot is that the legislation that was passed calls for schools to be able to select from among a list of approved science curricula. And the issue has been that there haven't been several science curricula approved for schools to choose from. But we're at a position where we have a really great relationship with GemsNet at URI and they have been phenomenal in supporting our science instruction. And our teachers wanted to maintain that relationship. They made the decision to move forward with OpenSciEd, which is a phenomenal science curriculum. So we're not, you know, it's great. I'm very happy we're doing it. So the middle school teacher said, we're ready to make that leap. The only reason the elementary didn't was because it wasn't all prepared, it wasn't all out yet. But all of the modules for elementary will be rolled out by February of 2026. And we anticipate that they will all be approved by Ed Reports, hopefully in the fall. And if not, I'm really confident that they will be eventually, so we're okay with that. It's science at the high school that we're still waiting on because there's just not much.
Yeah, that's where I was confused. Thank you.
Sure.
I just want to make a couple of comments. But I think your professional development that you're doing is really, really fantastic because I see what my granddaughter's coming home with. And I see how the teachers have, the information that she's been presented is really more than what I would expect. And she's in third grade right now. And it also, I think, what the teachers are doing are inspiring these kids to even be more. My granddaughter is now making little books, stapling papers together and writing little books. So I think, you know, from the grades, early grades to now, we've done, you've done a marvelous job, really. I mean, I just see these kids asking more questions and getting involved in more things and doing more things. Not just my granddaughter either, just all the kids that I know.
Yeah, we hate to keep referencing the pandemic, but it had a big impact. And I think, you know, now our students that are in third and fourth and fifth grade, you know, they've been out of it for a while and steadily in school. And so we're also seeing some of what we used to have come back, if that makes sense.
Well, I think it's even more than what we used to have. I really do believe so.
I hope so. Thank you.
Does anybody have any more questions?
I just want to say kudos to the teachers because as the world becomes more increasingly difficult for so many kids and their families, they're stepping up and, you know, working with less and budgets. And it's just, it's a tough time, so kudos to them and you, to see, and the administrators, to see this growth. It's really amazing.
For all of that, for sure.
Julie, thank you.
You're welcome.
Nice for the positive news.
Happy to help.
Don't retire.
Oh, don't worry. Number one.
Okay, so. Okay, agenda item number 10, report from our school committee's student representative, Ben. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Report tonight, there's no reports showing anything.
Okay.
Do you want to take a moment to congratulate Ben on his driver's license?
Yeah.
Publicly. Drove to the meeting, embarrassed him a little bit, but drove to the meeting by himself today, so congratulations.
We're all going to follow you home, make sure you get home okay.
Keep it under the speed limit.
Yeah.
Okay, agenda item number 11, reports of school committee subcommittees. Would anybody like to?
Sure. Madam Chair, oh, do you want to go ahead?
Oh, okay. The city committee at Steer Farm Elementary, they were, they had to cancel the first one that they had, the meeting that they had. And this one, for the first of the year, will be in December.
Oh, so I'll take the floor.
Oh, yes, Donison.
BEC met first Tuesday of the month. Just a couple of highlights, they reviewed the code of conduct. I think that was a mission by the council to make sure all committees are sort of following some sort of code of conduct. So we went through that. Just a headline on the, the financials are in line with last year. They typically show a little bit of a loss at this time of year. Enrollments down a little bit, but still strong. It's nothing unusual. They are looking for staff members. The message is it's $15.75 an hour. Looking for 6:30 to 8:30 in the morning and 3:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. So they're looking for some, I think, two staff members for that. They did mention something also, which I didn't even wear, but the flex spending accounts that a lot of businesses have for employees. Flex spending money is available for the use at the BEC, which I didn't, I didn't know that. They went over their budget, proved their calendar for next year. And that was about it. Their next meeting will be first Tuesday in January.
Donison, anybody else? All right, I just have, I went to the BPATH meeting, which was held on November 5th. I was happy to report that the 5K was, got some great feedback on that. Next year, they are going to move it from the six o'clock start to the 5:30, just because it started to get dark at the end. And also on December 7th, the police department, they're going to do the fill a cruiser again. And it's a food drive. I believe the cruiser will be at the gazebo at the Austin T. Levy School. So, December 7th, for that date. And it's food and toiletries they're looking for. And I know I say this at every meeting, but I'm going to say it again. The school improvement team from Austin T. Levy, they are looking for volunteers for different events that they hold, Pitcher Day, Book Fair, Lunch Duty, things like that. So if anybody knows anybody or if anybody is out there listening and they would like to volunteer at the Austin T. Levy School, please contact Mr. Brissette and get the ball rolling so you can be a volunteer there. And that's all I have. Anybody else? So we'll move on to agenda item number 12, correspondence and communications. I don't believe we have any tonight. Agenda item number 13, new business. Approval and vote on the homeschool applications and revocations.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve both the applications and revocations as presented.
I second that. Motion made by Donison Allen, second by Sylvia St. Pierre. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Disposal of obsolete equipment and vehicle. Equipment and vehicle.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Motion made by Donison Allen, second by Sylvia St. Pierre. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion and vote on the 25, 26 virtual instructional day plan. Does anybody have any questions about what was in our packet as far as the day plan goes? I think it was pretty much what was last year.
Yeah, very similar plan to last year. Again, this will be used only in the case of an emergency or if our number of traditional snow days, you know, exceeds two or three in a row or five or six for the school year. So our plan during the winter season is if we do have a snow day, to have a traditional snow day, make it up at the end of the school year. But if we have a really bad winter and we have too many days or if there's an emergency in one building, for example, and we may have to pivot to a virtual day in that one building. So, you know, sometimes there's things like a water pipe burst and one building has to be closed. Rather than make that day up at the end of the year, you could have a virtual day. So it'd only be used during emergency situations or if there are too many snow days. But we need approval from the school committee and then have it approved by RIDE pending this vote. Once it's approved by RIDE, then we can pivot to those virtual days if and when needed.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second?
Okay.
Motion made by Donison Allen, seconded by Jill Calipari. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, discussion vote on girls' hockey overnight field trip, girls' ice hockey overnight field trip request to Martha's Vineyard.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Dave Landry, seconded by Jill Calipari. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion and vote, letter to the town council to request a joint budget meeting for the fiscal year 27 school budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Sylvia St. Pierre, seconded by Jill Calipari. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item number 14, committee comments on agenda items. Okay, agenda item number 15, pending issue, issues, artificial field update.
So as I, I think everyone knows, the artificial field project is moving forward. As you, you drove in today or as you're on your way out, you can certainly see the progress that's being made there. The carpet has been put down and they're working on the seams and hoping to get this completed and in use for the spring season. So if things go as planned, then we'll be able to use this after the winter. I do not have an update on the space needs committee.
And I'd just like to make a comment. I know there was a lot of issues in the town, the people that were opposed to the field and the people that wanted the field. I just hope everybody remembers that this was always about the, the students and the kids in our town. And now that the field is down, I hope we get some positive feedback for the kids and support for the kids. This isn't about the town council. This isn't about the school committee. This is about the kids that live in Barville and are looking forward to playing on that field. So I hope we just keep that in mind as we go forward with this new beautiful field. And then agenda item, anybody else have anything to add?
Happy Thanksgiving.
There you go, Donison, good call. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Agenda item number 16, adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Sylvia St. Pierre, seconded by, I heard Donison's voice a lot, so I'm going to say Donison.
Whoever.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.